Call a roll, call, I guess I'll do that. Andrew?
Present.
Shapiro? Shapiro, I know he said he was here.
Where'd he go?
I know. His number's, oh, here he is. He's, he's joined us. Bill?
Well, somehow, somehow I got, somebody, I got muted somehow, but anyway, I figured out how to unmute.
I'm here. You'll be seeing us when we're not talking.
Right, but I got muted, I got muted ahead of time, so anyway, I figured out how to unmute, so I'm good. I'm here.
Okay. Bill Bishop?
Yeah.
Lori Anger?
Here.
Shapiro? He's not here yet. Martina Shea is here. Okay, we have five present of six, so we have a quorum. They're gonna pledge allegiance to the flag. I got my flag. Can I see my flag? Flag. Trying to get it in focus. Seem to be happening. Anyway, we'll pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Leading to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, one and just for all. We don't do that very well together. Okay, um, the third agenda on the item, um, is public input. I'd like to, uh, ask for a, uh, change to move item three to, um, after item five, part A. Uh, the receiver is supposed to be speaking to us tonight, and, um, I thought the public input should come after his, his talk, because, uh, a lot of the questions may be answered by what he has to say. Uh, can I entertain a question?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, Andrew, um, I assume we don't have any minutes?
I don't have them, I'm working on them, I'm still, my computer's still down at the moment, so.
No problem, can, uh, uh, we'll look at them at the next meeting?
I should have them ready by the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. New business, the receiver. Is the receiver here?
I am.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening to everybody. Um, I, Martina and Andrew, I want to express my appreciation for your reaching out and helping make this forum possible this evening. Um, I appreciate the, uh, spirit of collaboration that you offered, uh, most recently, so thank you. Um, I'm going to share my screen, so give me just one moment. There we go.
Starting to send the, yeah.
There's a little bit of a lag. Um, we got lucky, there was a thunderstorm that rolled through a little while ago, and the lights were blinking, I started to get a little worried about that. Um, but I appreciate everyone being here this evening. Um, we have an awful lot of information to try to convey, um, in a relatively short period of time, given the importance of the information. Um, you know, we have been grappling with COVID now since March 13th, and the school district had to close down, um, and pivot to remote learning, and although our educators, our teachers and our EAs and our building leaders really worked extremely hard last spring, um, I think none of us are particularly pleased with the outcomes of last spring, and we all know that we need to find ways to be more effective in this COVID-19 environment. Um, so over the summer, um, you know, actually, I should back up before I get there. Um, so one of the things that I think is very important to point out to folks is the communication around, um, what's been happening, and efforts to try to communicate, and a continued need for us to improve, and we are looking at better platforms that allow us to more quickly and transparently communicate information to folks. Um, but as you can see up here on the screen, shots from our website, and I just want to, uh, tell folks, it's so very important. If you have questions around our COVID-19 plan, questions around schools, often on the homepage, you're gonna find those documents, and so that's why I have this highlighted here below. Um, you know, it, it's very important that folks are able to get that information directly. Since we shut down, um, we have issued more than 27 different letters around COVID-19, uh, trying to provide people with information, and we've tried to use our automatic calling system, and, um, you know, my candid assessment of that system is that times it can be quite annoying to receive those messages, but the messages themselves are quite important. I'd like it to be more modern, where we can direct text message to folks and find ways that folks can choose how they interact with information with the school system, and Sarah Champagne, our communications folks, are trying hard to improve those systems and looking into that. I will draw your attention that we do have virtual open house events, different, uh, each building's gonna conduct it with their people, um, and answer questions similar to what I'm gonna answer tonight. Uh, myself, Dr. Farick, the deputy superintendent and the district lead on COVID-19, uh, will also be present, um, as well as our special education department, um, so more specific information about each school will be shared during those events, and I'd encourage folks, if there is a question about a school in particular, uh, certainly feel free to reach out to the principal, and if, um, for any reason, you feel that you need additional assistance or information, uh, direct it to the help email. Uh, it is monitored regularly and responded to regularly, and that email, see if I can just highlight that area for you. That email is help@southbridgepublic.org, or I U the, at southbridgepublic.org. And so, over the summer, uh, the state department began to produce an awful lot of information for districts to try to prepare us for the opening of school. Uh, we were all required to submit three plans, one for in-person learning, 100% of students in school, um, hybrid learning, so that would be a mix of kids at home and kids at school, and then remote learning, in the event that we were unable to open school. Initially, the plans were due August 10th, that was later extended to August 14th. The commissioner expressly asked districts not to share information about their plans until after submitting them to the state department. Now, this is where I'm just to be, uh, transparent, I work for the commissioner and have to follow that information. A lot of superintendents and school committees, um, were able to follow local control and determine what they would do in their communities independently of that. Um, there's a list of guidance documents on the right-hand side of the screen. We're certainly not gonna go into all of them, but the vast majority are part of our 185-page plan to reopen school, which again is on our website, which can be downloaded. Um, there's an abridged two-page guide to the high-level information, that's both in English and Spanish, and the entire plan will be translated into Spanish, that work is underway. At the beginning of the summer, Dr. Farick began our preparation for reopening school by conducting a feasibility study, so it was examination of every classroom, every room in the district, looking at the size of the room, its capacity, um, measuring how many desks could fit, and looking at two key indicators, how many desks fit in a classroom with three feet of spacing, and then how many desks fit with six feet of spacing, with six feet between each student, as we sat. Students were also to sit in rows, uh, think of how, uh, folks my age went to school, um, so that you could see the head of the person who sat in front of you, uh, no one would be face-to-face in that layout in classrooms. There was also surveys done, um, outreach to parents, both at, uh, the schools where we were providing free, and free lunches and breakfast for folks, but also, we had a team of, of staff members who went out door-knocking and calling, um, and trying to contact directly families, and I'll share some of that data in a minute. Um, and of course, we began the process of reviewing our procedures based on the pages and pages of guidance that was being produced, uh, week by week throughout the summer. So what we see here is a, uh, high-level, um, data script, data slide is put together by our data department. This is the results of our team that's reached out to parents, and we've been in contact with parents or guardians of 1,273 of our students, who roughly have 1,900 students in the district. And what we've learned through this slide, uh, through these data, I should say, is that there is a strong preference for remote learning in the district. Um, nearly half of those folks that we were able to speak with, um, expressed that preference. Um, we also asked, um, about transportation, and you can see nearly 46% of the folks that we talked to indicated their children would need to be riding the bus. Obviously, if, if we're talking now about remote learning in schools, and if we're reflecting on what happened last spring, uh, we're very concerned with the lack of connectivity, and so are some families. So we see, uh, while good solid 77% of those folks we talked to feel pretty good about having internet access, there's still a good 22% of our families who are concerned with their ability to maintain or have internet access. Uh, and I should say, here's the, um, data on internet access for our district. Um, so right now, we're looking at 91% are planning on having it or currently have internet access. That's great, but as you can see, some are very concerned about losing it. So after looking at our feasibility study, um, one of the first conversations Dr. Farick and I had was around a three-foot guidance that we had initially received over the summer, and, um, I rejected it, and basically said, if it's six feet at Walmart, if it's six feet at CVS, then it's gotta be six feet in our schools. Um, so we immediately scrapped any plans around three feet, and, uh, decided that all planning moving forward would be based on a six-feet social distancing, which, um, all science seems to suggest is definitely significantly safer than three feet. Um, when we looked at our parent survey information, um, and that hasn't changed over the summer, but not significantly, it has definitely held as we surveyed folks. Um, we knew there's a large percentage of families that were not, that are not comfortable sending their children to school. So we committed to making sure that we had remote learning as an option for all families, and that's been part of our communication for the last several weeks. Um, we want families to feel comfortable, that if they choose to keep their children at home, that the district will partner with them, that will provide them with technology, um, Chromebooks, for example, will assist them with internet access if that is a barrier, um, and we will have educational programming that is at a much rigorous level, and I'll go into details on that in a little bit, uh, but we'll offer real school for kids who are at home, um, much improved upon what we saw last spring. Now, we also know that for some families, school, one, for our younger kids, school's super important for our youngsters in kindergarten, first grade, um, at a very important developmental time, and so we recognize the importance of offering that opportunity for those families, and we also recognize that school also plays an important role in childcare for families, and we wanted to make sure that families could feel very good if they chose to send their child to school, so we proceeded on creating plans at the highest levels of safety that we could possibly pull off as a district. So you can see on the left-hand side, the traditional in-person version of school for Southbridge has planned for this fall. Um, taking aside the students who we know are gonna be learning remotely at home, um, we are bringing in or inviting back the remaining elementary students to school, um, we're making sure that, again, they'll be, uh, I'll go into detail on the safety protocols, but they'll be in school five days a week. Uh, we believe we can do this, maintaining, uh, the necessary safety protocol. For our secondary-age kids, that's grade six through 12, our analysis of facilities, analysis of the numbers of students, and the scheduling suggested that it would be, uh, rather dicey in trying to maintain six feet of social distance for secondary-age kids if we brought everyone back. So again, uh, we've switched to a hybrid model for that, uh, level of students. In our hybrid model, which I'll go into detail, but we're gonna have two cohorts, um, and one cohort of kids will be at school on any given day while the other cohort will not, reducing the number of kids in the building by 50% in general. Um, so the idea here is that you have some students who are choosing to remote learning, and that's K through 12, and again, some rather large numbers, and the remaining kids will be socially distanced and in hybrid models at our school. Um, all of our planning is based on the possibility that within any given moment, conditions in Southbridge might change, and then the only thing that we can do that's safe for everybody would be to move to a full remote model, so we're prepared for that as well. So some procedures that we're taking to improve safety in the schools, I, I can't stress enough, my review of the, the data around this virus, and all the recommendations and the materials that we've seen from both CDC, the state department, um, from, from other sources of public health, the World Health Organization and others, social distancing is so very important, so we're maintaining that six-foot distance level in our schools, for our students, our staff, and, uh, that's the number-one priority. And I should stress that each of these items works together to create a safer environment. Um, we're gonna require masks, and as I'll go into detail throughout this presentation, but masks are critically important, and we're gonna draw a pretty hard line on masks, and I imagine I may end up having some conversations with folks about masks and their personal preference around it, but at the end of the day, these systems don't work well if people aren't wearing masks. So masks are gonna be critically important. Promoting hand hygiene, we know that's so very important, and so we, again, will be setting up routines and procedures, reminding all of our students and staff the importance of hand hygiene. Increasing sanitation of the schools, uh, we're making some significant shifts in our custodians, for example, bringing night shift onto the day, seeking additional employees, we have postings up to add to the numbers of our custodians, so that we can maintain a clean environment throughout the day, focused on hard surfaces first during the day, and then actually sanitizing in the evening. Um, and we've taken some steps, I'll go into, as we move on, to improve our capacity to do that sanitization at night. Uh, setup of classrooms, Dr. Farick worked with each principal to review what proper classroom setups need to look like, and they actually did mock setups in classrooms throughout the summer, so they could land on a setup that worked best for all, again, keeping in mind the importance of keeping folks six feet apart, providing for the safety for our students, and the safety for our staff. Um, nursing and medical procedures have to be reviewed, um, and will continue to be, because guidance around these topics continuously changes. Transportation, uh, we are now limited to one-third of the number of students that can be transported on any given bus on any given day, so we have to revise those procedures and establish some safety protocols there. And then we're monitoring the community prevalence of COVID-19, working with the state department, um, the department of public health and others, uh, I'll share some metrics that can help us with that. Um, so, I think the metrics around public health are going to be an important indicator for us, as, as we really think about, or as I have to think about, is it safe to hold school on any given week, um, as we go through this, uh, scenario? It's not lost on me that we're gonna enter flu season in the fall, that there's gonna be folks that are sick, and, you know, we're, we're definitely all gonna have a high level of concern around this. Um, so each Wednesday now, the department of public health is releasing a weekly COVID-19 health report. We have it linked to our homepage, uh, southbridgepublic.org, and you can see our color code there, um, anytime you wanna check our status, we update it on Wednesdays, um, so each week we'll look at that. It's part of the information that I'm gonna need to consider when we talk about whether or not we can have full-time in-person school. And I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know where all this is going, um, but I certainly wanna make sure that we are maintaining a careful eye on these important data. Um, right now, for the last two instances, so I guess that's roughly four weeks of data that's been looked at, Southbridge has been in the green with actually a slight peak line at the moment, so that's great news. We definitely wanna be in the green, um, that's not the case for all districts across the Commonwealth, um, and that's why you'll see some districts are in a different phase. Uh, on the right-hand side of this chart, I mean, I, I do apologize, it's, it's blurry because it had to come out of a screenshot, this was not produced for us digitally. Um, on the right-hand side, you see that the DESI's, uh, expectations around what were really guidance around, what should we do if we're shaded either green or white, for example? Um, and the recommendation there is you can, in fact, do full-time in-person. Uh, I draw attention to, or hybrid if extenuating circumstances. Well, we have extenuating circumstances. Our high school, middle school are in hybrid, because we determined that we could not safely bring all kids back full-time in-person, and, and, uh, that's quite acceptable in the eyes of the state, for sure. Um, oops, excuse me, sorry about that. My big concern, um, honestly, it, it, going into yellow is gonna be really difficult to make a good determination on as what to do, and that's when we really will need to have a lot of conversations with Andy Reynolds, Reynolds and the, um, health department, and identify and understand what's going on in our community. Um, Dr. Farick and I have been part of a task force in the community, working closely with the town manager and the health department, police, fire, and other, uh, local leaders, members of the town council. Um, and through that, those conversations definitely gleaned a lot of good information and, uh, created some relationships with, uh, Harrington Hospital, for example, and so there will be good sources of information for me and for us as we determine what to do, um, if things start to change in town, but I still think yellow's gonna be a time where our anxiety collectively will go up, and people will be clamoring for what's going to happen. Um, and I think what'll happen is we'll try to get more information. Is it a rise in cases due to, you know, folks at the rehabilitation center? Or is it, uh, you know, really limited to a senior center or a hospital, or, or is it something that's just community-bound, which is a greater concern for all of us when we think of the schools? In some ways, red would be the easiest. Uh, you know, there's, there's, if we hit red, that's a simple, okay, how do we switch to remote? Because we're not gonna be in school if cases are on the rise and we're in red and COVID is, is starting to move through the community. And luckily, we've not experienced that, even at the peak in Southbridge, um, but it is something that we have to be very concerned about. So this will be part of how we determine, uh, safety in our school as far as the community factors that are, that are around COVID-19. One of the important safety factors that, that we have taken into consideration, uh, we followed guidance from the department, we have placed orders for and have received thousands of medical masks, gloves, N95 masks, hand sanitizer. We actually have so much hand sanitizer right now, we're working with the fire department to determine how best to store it, because it is a flammable substance. Um, eye protection, face shields, we actually have more face shields on order beyond the 130. We're giving staff the choice if they'd like to wear it. Um, that's because after the initial order was placed, we learned through science that, um, eyes can be a source of infection, so we want folks to feel as comfortable as possible. We also have ordered disposable gowns. Remember, in our schools, we do have students who, um, are significantly medically impaired, um, and our nurses have to manage all kinds of functions with kids, and so therefore, making sure our staff who are in those situations have the most important gear. So it's been ordered, it's on hand, um, and we'll monitor the amounts and continue to order more if necessary, um, because it's an important part of making sure everybody stays safe. We've also had to secure new technology. I can't say enough how disappointed I was with, with the district's ability to pivot. Um, I had, I feel horrible about, uh, the inability to give every kid in town a Chromebook computer, um, like some communities were able to do. Um, and I think that was essential for us to find a way to solve that problem. And those who followed the town council and the budget conversations in the spring, um, we were able to secure savings from shutdown that allowed us to engage, uh, in a three-year lease to secure 1,700 Chromebooks for the district. The department, DESI, had also, um, promised actually 150 computers last spring. Um, as the summer has gone for so many districts, lots of stressful things occurred. About a month ago, um, Mr. Parent, our technology director, asked me to join him on a telephone call where we were informed by our Chromebook vendor that 108,000 Chromebooks had been seized by the US Department of Commerce, because they were produced in China in conditions that we consider illegal, uh, and therefore, we should expect delays. Um, it's not just Southbridge that's in that boat, as you can imagine, a great deal, part of the country had ordered Chromebooks over this summer. So we're in line for those Chromebooks. Today, 300 arrived, um, so we got 300 new Chromebooks to add to, um, approximately 800 that we have from years past in the district that we use for our assessments and et cetera. Um, about a month ago, we then said we need another plan, uh, because we need a contingency plan, and Mr. Parent worked very hard to come up with an alternative plan, and we were able to place an additional 500 Chromebooks uh, in an order from a different vendor, different supply, um, and have a high level of expectation that they'll be here in the first week of September. Part of this is why delaying school made so much sense. We wanted to make sure, at the time, I didn't even know if we were gonna get the PPE in, um, but we knew we needed some more time, uh, to make sure we have the equipment that's necessary for kids. So when the commissioner allowed districts to push off school those extra 10 days, um, we took advantage of that immediately. Um, we have ordered 400 Wi-Fi hotspots, those have arrived, and so we now have the means to support kids who do not have internet access. Um, we've also ordered other various video, audio equipment, um, iPads, uh, microphones, and different systems that we found necessary to support remote learning. So a tremendous lot, amount of materials been ordered, some have been received. Um, we're monitoring this very closely, because I believe this is critical to our, um, ability to pivot if necessary, and to make sure we have equity in our instruction for all of our kids, regardless if they choose to be home, remote, or if they're in our schools in a hybrid model. I should point out also, I had said DESI had, um, hoped to give us 150, there was a donor who had donated to school districts. Um, that order got cut back by 50, um, we were notified shortly after, I was notified about the department of commerce. It was not a good week. Um, so unfortunately, uh, that number was reduced by 50, and we've been trying to make it up with our additional order. Our needs don't stop the technology, so, um, we have, um, developed a position called the District Health and Safety Coordinator, and I'm pleased that Nurse Cheka from our high school has agreed to take that position and lead that work for us, and we have backfilled her position at the high school for this year, um, and Karen is, um, helping provide, and Jen Lynch also has filled in from the middle school at times, but helping to provide a medical perspective in reviewing our procedures, and will be allowed to basically spend her time moving from school to school, working with our school nurses, helping them support now the new nurse aides, and we are posted for six new nurse aides, assigned one to each of the buildings, um, so that we have some medical staff who can assist in the event that a child presents ill, that we then need to have that child separated from the remainder of the school, and just to make sure our procedures are correct, safe, et cetera. Um, so we're very pleased that, that this Cheka's, uh, working with us on that. Um, we've also are extending the number of cleaning folks that we have at our custodial team. Um, we have explored outsourcing night cleaning, um, that hasn't proven to be, um, a path that seems to be working for us, so we continue to try to add to our custodial crew, and we will be pulling folks in, um, for days while students are in school. If we have to use overtime, then we're gonna use overtime, the bottom line is we need to make sure our schools are clean, and we need to make sure they're disinfected at night. Part of how we're going to accomplish that is we've also, uh, purchased some, um, pretty sophisticated backpack, uh, devices that use electrostatic cleaning and, uh, can spray a whole room and disinfect that room, um, at a much higher rate than you could by hand, and so we've ordered a dozen of those or so. Um, we are also exploring things like, uh, floor cleaning machines that can get the work done quicker, recognizing our staff can only do so much, but ma- maintaining clean schools is gonna be super important this fall. We've also posted for 21 bus monitors, so that we can have someone monitoring the children as they enter our buses. Part of that job is to help detect if a child appears to be ill, and help us then make sure we take steps to protect everybody. we take steps to protect everybody. That's going to be very difficult to do in a fair, dispassionate way. We're going to need to partner with families and we'll be communicating information with families to have them, help them assess whether or not their child can come to school prior to putting them on a bus. And there are some checklists that we'll communicate around that. Things, for example, if you have a fever of 100 or higher, you can't come to school. But we are in the process of hiring bus monitors for all our buses. We've had to add educators, additional teachers and some EAs. This is based on the need to have class size and social distancing. So we continue to post and hire folks for those positions. In food service, we've bought an awful lot of equipment because we want to make sure that we can produce meals in classrooms. That means we've had to add carts and coolers and paper products and the way to make sure food is handled appropriately and safely and even garbage cans because now we're going to have hundreds of kids eating in classrooms. Which to underscore, the six feet social distancing was so important because that's the only way you can eat safely without your mask. You cannot do that at three feet social distance and feel as if you are in a safe environment. And then we also have a technology professional development partner that is working with our teachers, just learning the basics of Google Classroom and then also moving later into more sophisticated uses of technology to improve remote learning and student engagement, assuming we're into this for the long run. One important thing I need to share with folks is part of our transportation concerns was the limit of the bus capacity. We can only have about one-third, roughly 24 students riding on any given bus now. So we worked with the bus company and the first request was, well, can we get more buses? And bus company, AA Transportation absolutely cannot add more buses. And this is not an uncommon refrain. Districts are hearing this across the Commonwealth. So we needed to figure out a way to be able to transport the students who were coming to our schools safely. Again, maintaining as much distance as possible in the bus and meeting that limitation in ridership. So working with AA, we arrived at a shift in school hours. We tried, initially, we were thinking of a shift that would only impact Eastford Road. But again, as the bus company put together routes and thought through plans, you'll see there's about a 15-minute shift here at different buildings from year over year. And so we'll be continuously communicating this information out to families. I recognize changing schools' start times is a difficult thing. You know, we're in a pandemic trying to get things done that have never been done before. I have children myself, I learned yesterday, the person I thought was watching my child while my wife and I returned to work, she's an educator as well, that person got a job and so quit on us. So we're now scrambling to figure out who's watching our nine-year-old. So I understand how difficult this is for everybody. And, you know, I'm not lying, my wife teaches second grade, so I see this from the perspective of a husband of a teacher. And so making sure we do these things well, to me, is personally very important. So as folks think about elementary school, what will be different? The classes will likely be a lot smaller just because we want to maintain a social distance. We are going to have to limit movement across the building. We don't want groups of kids going from place to place like they normally would. Again, six feet social distancing signage that's been ordered and will be placed on floors, reminding children, reminding folks about masks, reminding folks about hand sanitization. We're going to have to pull art, music and other classes into classrooms so that kids aren't moving again in large groups. We're trying to cohort groups of people. That will help if there is an instance where someone does become sick, we can then contact, trace much simpler by knowing who's been with who and knowing who sat where, et cetera. We're looking at changing arrival dismissal procedures to, again, try to move folks along quickly and not have things just congregate together. Looking at bathroom nurse visit procedures. Physical education has to be significantly modified based on new precautions about student activity, respiration, et cetera. But we do also know we're talking about children and they need to move and they need to have mask breaks. What I've said to our elementary principals in particular, but all principals in general, like, we have to remember we're educating kids, they're going to be squirrely, they need to be able to take a break. And if you need to take your class outside of school and do a lap around the building so they can move and they can stay six feet apart, maybe get some fresh air, that time will be time well spent. Kids can't learn if they can't focus. So we are going to have mask breaks and those will evolve, I'm sure, over time, but they're going to be important. We are limiting visitors in our buildings, but we will have specific procedures for those who do need to come, including the use of masks, hand sanitizing, signing in, et cetera. Very important. We also have spent a lot of time with our positive behavior interventions and supports teams. The school climate is so important to us. We want our adjustment counselors to be ready and helpful. We know kids have been out of school a very long time and, you know, folks are going to need support. There's a tremendous amount of stress for everybody. And so making sure that they're ready and making sure that we've updated our PBIS matrices and our lessons for kids so they understand what we expect is going to be an important part of bringing kids back to school. What is going to continue to be important and the same for us is our teaching and learning priorities remain on our reading and mathematics. We're in year two of our Wonders Reading Series at elementary school and we're in year one of using Ready Math. Comes at a timely moment. Ready Math also has a robust digital learning component. So we will have digital activities in language arts and math for our kids in elementary school. It's of a robust, high-quality nature. And we're going to continue to focus on climate and culture. When we talk about secondary schools, we're talking about a hybrid learning model. And so this graph here tries to demonstrate what that kind of looks like. So the red group will be half of the school. We're going to do our darndest to keep families together, again, recognizing, you know, having a student in school Monday, Tuesday, another one Thursday, Friday is not exactly easy for a family. We want to be partners in that work. If there's a reason for a family that in fact they want their kids separated, I would encourage them to contact the high school and we can work with them on that too. But in general, we're cohorting kids best we can and you'll see red group, for example, comes to school Monday, Tuesday. They learn remotely Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Cohort white would learn remotely Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday and be in school on Thursday and Friday. An important part about how secondary education and in high school in particular, what's going to function is related to that schedule. And, you know, we've been working with teachers to utilize technology to improve that. Our plan is to be sure that both groups remain on the same page throughout the day and throughout the semester. And as I get into questions and answers part of this, I think I will add some clarity as to what that cohort looks like and what the day might look like for secondary kids. But in general, grades six through 10, we're attempting to keep together so we know who kids travel with. It's much harder in grades 11 and 12, based on the nature of the courses that those kids take, it's going to be a lot harder to cohort them. But band chorus, physical education absolutely need to be taught in different ways. For example, I know our band director just asked for a different type of bells that they can use to continue to teach music to kids that doesn't involve the respiration and the concerns that are around some of our instruments or around chorus, for example. And so we're working with them to identify materials to support their curriculum. But again, we're in a pandemic, it's going to be really hard, no one has done this before and we're being asked to change entire content areas and still make it engaging for kids. So I'm not sugarcoating that it's going to be a difficult fall for all of us, particularly the teachers of those courses and kids who have to be in those courses, who probably love either playing that instrument, love singing in a group, you know, love playing basketball. And so we can't deny how difficult this is going to be for everybody. At the high school and middle school transitions, again, we're going to make sure we have physical distancing. It's a large part of, again, of why we have half the school in at any given time. We're going to have breakfast and lunch in classrooms. We're going to have changed arrival dismissals. Bathroom and nurse visits have to be adjusted to be safe. Again, even older kids, adults need mask breaks and we'll encourage at least two a day, but there will be ways that we can do this creatively. Our high school, middle school campus certainly affords for that, which is great, beautiful lot. Students will be instructed on all requirements because we use PBIS, which means you teach your expectations explicitly and reinforce what you're looking for. So there are going to be overt lessons actually provided to everyone and what we're talking about when we talk about social distancing or physical distancing and wearing a mask, et cetera. And again, we now have at the high school, middle school, five adjustment counselors. I've been adding adjustment counselors over the last few years to try to meet our students' needs. They're going to be available to support kids as well as other staff members. Secondary schools are going to continue to focus on our language arts and math curriculum. We're going to continue to focus on our climate and culture, which is find ourselves in a very different circumstance than we were at this time last year. I'm sure, I know there are members of the school committee, former members of the town council and others who are adding this all up in their minds, like, where does this money come from? So we're hoping to work with the town around the MEO funds. There's $1.4 million that is available to Southbridge. We've been granted through ESER funds about $800,000. We also received another $250,000 per student for roughly $480,000 from the state as well and then a remote learning grant that supports technology. So that's where a lot of those positions, a lot of those technology, cleaning supplies, most all of it is assigned to these grants. And these are really one-time expenditures for this school year. I certainly hope things are in a much better shape as we're in the spring producing a school budget, because I can foreshadow that the fiscal year '22 is going to be a very difficult one. And that's where we're going to be extremely challenged. Right now, the finances are actually on the back burner. It's finding the people to fill the positions, it's getting the Chromebooks, it's the logistics of those things that are our challenges. The state has come through with support and funding, but it's the execution and availability of some of these things that continue to be challenges for us. So I've tried to prepare some frequently asked questions based on some feedback at the Southbridge Education Association that shared some with me last week. And so I tried to cull things together and hopefully I can articulate a little bit more and expand upon some of the things that I was talking about earlier. So are masks required and what if someone can't wear a mask? You know, that's going to be a quandary for all of us, but the position I'm taking is yes, we expect staff and students to wear masks. And that means kids in kindergarten and first grade too. I know that's not easy, but it's collectively important for all of us that that happens. So that's what we're asking of our staff and students. Now, we do have remote learning available, so a mask is not at all possible. We're going to work very hard to make sure remote learning is robust and that kids have access to the same instruction as kids who are in school. In fact, at our elementary schools, for example, the model that we are working with, and we've just last week met with a group of teachers who were really poking at the model and trying to find ways to make it work better, and I'm certain six months from now, they will have succeeded and our model will be drastically improved. Once you give teachers time with something, they'll improve it. But for now, we're going to lean on our technology. We have the ability to use Google Classroom and Google Meet and we can have a teacher with 10 students in front of them and 10 students at home joining together for a morning meeting in an elementary class. Doing a morning meeting time together, the teacher can go into a literacy lesson, for example, and then we can have students break off and create online activities. Again, leaning hard on our new electronic resources that we have. I know working with our principals and our teachers, we could flesh out the entire day, part of the work that they've been doing this week and will do over the next, I guess, week and a half that we have in professional development. Never in my career have I seen 14 days of professional development before school starts, but it's an excellent opportunity for us. Mask breaks. Again, we're new to this, so we know kids need at least two a day, they're probably going to need four or five in the beginning. And we're going to need to give our teachers permission to read their classrooms and make good decisions about what kids need and work to be sure that kids are comfortable as we all learn about what we're doing here. I expect this to only improve over time. What are the consequences for a student who refuses to wear a mask? Well, one, we always approach this, it's an educational opportunity first. We want to work with kids to help them understand why it's so important, why we're collectively uncomfortable, why I walk around with foggy glasses now. It's important that even our youngest kids engage in this conversation. Disciplining out of the gate for something like this is not likely to be very effective, but this is important. So this will be something that we will continue to focus on. And if a student just can't comply, again, they'll be, we'll have to talk with families and figure out something different. Because at the end of the day, I need not only the students to be very comfortable in school so they can learn, but we need staff to be comfortable in school so they can teach. And so this is going to be a partnership. We all have to work together to keep each other safe. And I recognize that's going to be an area of friction at times, but I think it's super important that we acknowledge it at the gate and just try to work together to make it happen, again, for our collective well-being. Another one that I know has got people very concerned, honestly, came out of right field as far as a policy position, is the requirement now that every student get a flu shot. This was just released last week. We did not have any warning or notice. While I understand the science behind it and understand that the flu season mixed with COVID is going to make a mess for all of us. We will now have to work with public health and others and our nursing staff for sure to help families understand how they can comply with the requirement, which is to get a flu shot by December 31st. What's not clear is if this applies to staff or not. You know, I would encourage folks to talk to a doctor about it, so I won't comment on efficacy, but it's a requirement now and it's a state requirement and, you know, we'll work with families to help them best we can to help them comply. Folks have asked about staff and students receiving a COVID-19 test. Currently, we do not have plans for any large-scale testing. We do have protocols that are part of our online, you can find on our website, our policies and procedures around staff or folks who are suspected of having COVID-19 and we'll enforce those. For example, if you're, I should wait, I'll go into detail later on, I don't want to confuse anyone, but the scenarios can be quite confusing. But the bottom line is we do have protocols that are very important. There has been notice from the department that in instances of significant uprisings, testing might be made available on a larger scale. Now, I do know that in Southbridge, there are testing sites that we can make known to families. For example, Harrington Hospital was a testing site last spring, but I'm sure there are others that are available as well. So the protocols for reporting COVID-19 illness, this is really important. So if a staff or student are considered to be in close contact with someone who is determined to be positive for COVID-19, that individual who is considered to be in close contact should be tested. And then regardless of that test result, they're going to have to remain in quarantine for 14 days after that exposure to the person who tested positive. And that exposure could count back even two days prior to someone being tested positive. So essentially, super important to stem the tide of COVID spreading. That's why this protocol has been put in place and again, it's a state recommendation. Close contact, really important. This definition actually changed a week ago. This definition actually changed a week ago. And so the medical advice now is that close contact is defined as those who have been within six feet for at least 15 minutes of someone who was tested positive for COVID-19 at the time that that person was infectious. So again, an important detail there is saying person A was positive COVID on Tuesday and a student spent 15 minutes with him on Wednesday. Actually, I should take that back, on Tuesday, so say Monday, they would have to quarantine for 14 days. As you can see, this can be very confusing. This is also why we have Karen Cheka helping lead this, a medical professional, make these determinations. But very important that if someone's within close contact, so you can imagine a classroom, there could be two or three students who have sat 15 minutes, six feet away from someone. We would have to identify that cluster of folks. And that leads us to, well, what are the protocols for communicating COVID-19 illness? While we must respect that everyone has medical privacy rights, so we're not going to be blasting out the names of people who have COVID. We do have to be sure that we do contact tracing. And we have to identify those folks who are in close contact with an individual. And we need to not only communicate with their families and ensure that they follow the proper protocols of testing and quarantine. But we're also going to want to maintain transparency and at least notify families in that classroom and school, and yes, we've had a case. And I expect we're going to have cases of COVID. That is likely, given the circumstance that we're in. Certainly, we need to make sure that we are transparent about it. I want everyone knowing the same information around something as serious as this. Can families start remote learning and then switch back to in-person learning? Is a question we've heard quite a bit. And so the short answer is yes, but there's a huge caveat here. We're asking families, if you choose remote learning, we need you to be in it for at least the first trimester in elementary school or the first quarter in secondary school, which is about November. And the reason being is the logistics of getting a child placed into a physical classroom and being sure that we have the proper social distance may be a problem. Might not be, and if it's not, believe me, I'm happy to make the switch quicker. But we definitely need folks to anticipate it taking longer. Because what we can't do is create an unsafe situation and just move people back in and overcrowd a classroom. If we have to, because enough folks are coming back, which in my mind would be a good problem to have, because I firmly believe kids really need to be in school to be best educated. Then we might have to hire staff, which is not easy, to be quite honest, right now. So that's what led to us making that caveat, that it's going to take time. And obviously, as we go through the school year, we go longer into the school year. It may not be November, it might be that now we're into the second trimester and we're talking at near the end of that trimester. But the real bottom line there is what we need is the time to make sure that we do it appropriately. Who's responsible for Chromebooks? So when we do distribute the Chromebooks, and certainly I'm hoping they all come in sooner rather than later. You know, Chromebook is a piece of equipment, just like a textbook. So we're going to assign it to the kids and the families. You know, we certainly ask that kids and families care for them best that they can. We did, on our new Chromebooks, purchase a long-term warranty, so if they are damaged, we can assure quick replacement. Our plan will be if all our Chromebooks arrive on time, that we will have extras in the event that kids don't bring one to school or it's not charged or Chromebooks are damaged. That we'll have enough where we can continue to move instruction forward. All contingent on things coming in on time, so there's a lot of moving parts here. But we just ask families that, once they do have the Chromebook in their hands, if something is wrong with it, notify the school immediately. We are working with a third party to provide technical support services for students and families as well. We'll be communicating that, recognizing if kids can't connect, they can't get online, they can't get to class, and that's a problem. So we're trying to be proactive and create avenues where we can support families at home around the use of that Chromebook. I had talked a little about this earlier, but what does the learning model look like? So in elementary, what I ask you to picture is imagine if there were 20 kids in the classroom normally, a regular year, and then imagine 10 of them staying home while the other 10 are in school. The concept that we're trying to do is use technology so that those 20 kids are reunited for certain parts of the day. So that there's a morning meeting, social gathering, whole group discussion, whole group instruction around, say, language arts, reading, math, or writing. But then also times when they're working independently, trying again to use technology so that they remain more engaged. Software that was designed for kids to learn independently on and provide teachers with information about student learning. And then teachers are being trained on how to use Google Classroom, so they'll be able to make and send their own assignments through electronic means as well. In middle school, we're going to try it a little differently and try to use Edgenuity, which is an online learning platform. We've been using Edgenuity for quite some time with our high school students with a high level of success. Combined with Google Meets and large group meetings of kids to create a social dynamic. And in high school, we are going to, again, assume, you know, assume we had a normal school year. We assigned everybody a schedule and then you pulled out half the class out of that schedule. That half is in a different hybrid cover, cover. And so that half would be learning remotely while the teacher's teaching physically to, say, 10 kids that are present. I'm not saying that's the easiest solution, but in many ways, it does help keep kids on the same page. It allows us to continue to move through the curriculum. It certainly will allow kids to still interact with their teacher when they're remote, be part of the classroom. It solved a lot of problems, but I'm sure we're also going to encounter problems as we use these models. There's still perfection here. But I'm also confident, again, that once we get rolling, I'm going to go and see some teachers doing some pretty dynamite things with kids on Chromebooks in their class while kids are at home on Chromebooks and they're all learning together. And so I'm actually excited to see that evolve, because I'm certain the one good thing that might come out of all this is we learned to use technology in a more effective way with kids. So the question about how do we assign kids to either the red or white cohort, I mentioned a little bit earlier. But essentially, it's about splitting the school roughly 50/50. So we're using our software for scheduling and then, you know, folks are pulling out red and white cohorts. The idea is to try to keep families together. But again, we are willing to be partners in this and try to make sure that families feel comfortable with how the schedule came up to the limits of what scheduling a high school can be. There are often a lot of choices and compromises that are necessary. Really important around remote learning is grading. So last spring, across America, and I had a student, my daughter graduated last spring. And I still tease her to this day, the class of 2020 in many ways got robbed from a lot of very important things, like we didn't have a graduation, we didn't have a prom, you know, a lot of not really good things. Well, one gift they got was a pretty easy pass on grades. And that was across the board. And that's not going to happen anymore. It's been very clear that we're expected to make remote learning remote school with grades, assignments, due dates. So kids are really going to have to make sure they're tuning in, they're following their schedules, which will be fixed schedules, so they'll know what time to log in and they'll know when they're expected to be in class. And they're going to have to finish that work. And we're going to follow our grading policies and we're going to have to enforce those grading policies. It's going to be super important, excuse me, super important for us to have outreach and support. And so I'm sure our family liaisons and our adjustment counselors and other folks are going to be pretty darn busy, reaching out and trying to figure out, hey, are you having trouble getting online? We weren't in class today, we really need to see you there, reaching out, working with families to make sure that's happening. Again, I have six kids, most of mine are teenagers or older, and I can imagine each and every one of them at times maybe not logging on when they're supposed to. So I recognize families need some partnership on this, and we'll do our best to be good partners. Attendance is really going to matter too, and so we're going to take attendance. We will designate in our system a remote learner being in attendance and a physical person being at attendance, but we're going to track attendance. Another really important area is the special needs students in our district. So students who have an individualized educational plan or IEP, sometimes they're called special ed students. We are 100% obligated to make sure that we meet their educational needs. Now, some of the interventions, the modifications and accommodations that used to work in school may or may not still work. And so we're going to continue to meet with families in the IEP meetings, meet with families, have phone calls, and work through their student's plans, be sure that they feel that they're successful. Our director of special education will be present at our school site meetings, so if families have questions. She's also said to me today to tell families to call her office. And again, if you just can't contact, send an email to the help desk, they will get you in contact with our special education professionals. But we absolutely want to make sure kids' needs are met and also recognize there's a lot of challenges around doing that, particularly for kids who are learning remote. But it does not in any way take the district off the hook from helping and supporting kids with an IEP. So if there's difficulty, reach out, because we need to make sure that we're your partner on that. Same for students with 504 accommodation plan. Section 504, the individuals, excuse me, section 504, confusing my laws here. Those students also need to make sure that their plans are supported. So again, our guidance staff, our high school principal, middle school principal, all of our admin are working hard to be sure that we follow those guidelines for those students. And I would encourage families who feel as if something is not going well to talk to the building principal immediately. We recognize this is going to be very stressful for everybody. Cleaning of schools. So again, we're increasing the number of custodians. And we are also creating a schedule for cleaning hard surfaces throughout the day, because that's really going to be the area of focus. While cleaning the floors is a nice thing, when you don't really like to see dirty floors, it's much more important that hard surfaces, doorknobs, handrails, desks are clean and sanitized every day. The electrostatic backpack unit should be very helpful in speeding up some of these processes, but you got to clean desk first, then you can sanitize or disinfect. School air quality, has it been tested? No, not aware of a COVID-19 air quality test. Our high school, middle school has a state-of-the-art air handling HVAC system. That system has been set to move the maximum of air from in and outside the building to exchange air as often as it can. It also, when it mixes air from inside the building and outside the building, does use ultraviolet sanitation, there's an ultraviolet system in that unit. So that's absolutely the state of the art. Our other buildings are much older buildings, but they do have HVAC systems that allow for external air exhausting out of the building. Generally, it pulls out of the hallways, the large air handling units on the roof. Those have all been set to maximum. They all go on well before, hours before people are entering into the building. There's also windows that operate in many of the older buildings. And then classrooms typically have what we call a univent heater, wall-based. They, during the spring and fall, they have air exchange by having an outdoor vent wide open that does close when it gets cold. But those units do circulate that air as well. We're asking that we don't have fans pointing at people across rooms. We're looking carefully at any room that does have an air conditioning unit. Often rooms of students with special needs do. Make sure that those units aren't blowing air across folks as well. So we are doing the absolute best that we can, be sure that our HVAC system's working with us and not against us. The reality is, as many, many school buildings, they are older, but the good news is these systems do move a lot of air. So that is something that's a little bit encouraging. At our high school, we recently announced a partnership with Quincy and Long Community College, where we actually will have the opportunity in the future for our students to attend some college courses. While in high school, and some other partnerships, and they are using some space in the high school. Their students are not attending in-class personally this fall, they're going to be virtual. So at the moment, we do not have Quincy students in the building, but as a part of our memorandum of understanding, we will collaborate and be sure that the same uniform safety policies apply if and when students from the university are present. I want to stress to folks, if you have questions. First, I know there's a lot of employees online. It's really, really important that employees ask their supervisor questions. If the supervisor's not responsive, please make sure you contact Maureen Gullickson. She is the chief of staff and is in charge of HR and also serves as my executive assistant. She and I will make sure your questions are answered. So it's important that you do that, so we can give you the best information that we have. Parents and guardians, if you have questions, it really is the easiest. I know some folks will say this is generic, but our help desk immediately responds to questions and gets them to the right people in the district. And you can also call or text the number on the screen as well. We do want to answer people's questions. I do want families to feel as if they can send their kid to school and not worry. It is a scary time for all of us. Nothing's perfect. We're all taking a risk every day, but if we collectively follow the safety guidelines, we can minimize risks. And that's really what we're trying to do here. I know that we're all faced with a lot of challenges as we work through this pandemic. So it's certainly not been a very, you know, good experience for myself, and I'm sure you all agree. We wish we could move right through this and find ourselves back into what we consider normal. So that's my prepared comment at this point. Again, I thank the school committee for collaborating on this event and allowing me to use their time to share this information with Southbridge. And I'm sure this will be made available to other folks offline as well.
I'd like to thank Dr. Valar for answering so many of our questions. I do have one quick question. When will they be getting the bus schedules out? Because I know that drives parents crazy.
Yeah, unfortunately, like, the times are just set, lists are still being generated. The survey data that I shared today on that dashboard is information that we need to get over to transportation as far as which students have elected for transportation as they build the routes. I ask people to be patient. It is, transportation's always a nightmare in September. It is going to be a super nightmare this year. I wish I could say it wouldn't be. Everything feels last minute, and we're just scrambling. So as soon as we can, we certainly will put it out there.
I actually have a quick question, if I may. Aspen Portal, I've had a couple parents message me that they haven't received any kind of information about the login or password. So could we double-check that to make sure that that's gone out to all the parents, so they know if they're red team or white team?
So thank you. Really good topic to bring up. So we worked really hard with the data that we had in our database to contact folks over the portal. Things were sent out to student emails, to the numbers we had, but we recognize it's a mobile world. People change numbers and contact information all the time. So any parent who hasn't gotten that information, if they send an email to those email accounts, it's, you know, help@southbridge, that will get funneled to the right person to get them set up so that they can get access right away. Because the portal is a great piece of information. I'm seeing Dr. Faric is sharing that that information from the high school was sent out. But if folks aren't in the database, they won't get those messages. It's also difficult for us then to communicate with them on other issues. So getting folks into that database, super important. And the Aspen Portal, I'm glad you asked that question, because that is the best way for families to get connected.
Anybody else on the committee have any questions?
If I may, Dr. Valar, could you elaborate more on how the Remote Learning Academy is going to be interacting with the on-campus students? is going to be interacting with the on-campus students? For both the student perspective and how it will work from the teacher's perspective as well?
Yeah, so as I probably poorly articulated in my presentation, I apologize. What we're trying to do at elementary school is to create a classroom environment with kids who are at home in remote learning and kids who are physically present so that they're all connected in that one classroom. So typically it'd be 20 kids in a classroom, give or take some kids across our district. So we're going to try to assign kids to that same class so that they will experience what we call synchronous, same-time teaching from the same teacher on math, language arts, et cetera. But then also have individual learning time at home using some like the iReady software, the Wonders Online software, and assignments that teachers create and distribute through Google Classroom. So a challenge that I believe we're going to have is helping families see their child's schedule and help them be sure that they log in for those important unified instructional times so that they're all present at the same time. And then also helping them if they need to log back in for small group instruction with their teacher at another point, making that connection. We're exploring the ability to send a link to each kid's Chromebook that will link them to their teacher's classroom. I hope that this will work. It's something we're looking at now. Basically creating like an icon on the screen that's my class and a kid could click and then it would bring them to that shared classroom with their physical peers and teachers as well. So that's kind of where we're headed with that. The idea to bring groups together, same at the high school. Middle school, we're going to lean a little more on edge annuity so there'll be some more independent instruction on that. But again, all this is subject to change as teachers dig in and begin to see what works. Right, because what we're most, most concerned about is engaging kids in learning. And so there's a part of me that's very fearful that without a lot of effort, quite a few kids are just not going to log in. And so we can't let that happen. And it's going to be a battle. I'm not saying I have a solution to it, but I, again, I have a lot of teenagers. So I saw how some of them reacted to this in the spring and this isn't every kid's favorite idea. So it's going to be a difficult time.
So how is it, so it's just the elementary school that you're doing the synchronous learning? That's the plan moving forward at this time?
And the high school. Yep. There will be some group time at the middle school as well. That middle school principal is trying to, again, lean on edge annuity to see how that will evolve. And honestly, I thought it was a good idea to try a little different, with a different age group and see if we get a better result.
How is it going to look from the teacher's side, having the remote learning students being in that social learning environment remotely? How's it going to work on that end?
Well, again, this is theoretical at the moment, so we'll see how it works in a couple weeks. But you know, one of our teacher leaders had demonstrated this to a group of us where she had actually used her projector in her classroom. All of our classrooms have a digital projector and a whiteboard. And she actually turned her classroom around in the sense that she projected, just like we're all on this Google Meet right now, she projected the squares of where the students would be onto her whiteboard. It stood in the other side of the room and she said, I can teach the kids on that whiteboard while I'm talking about Macbeth to the kid sitting right here in front of me. And so her point was she could have, you know, 10 kids in front of her and 10 kids remote and be able to interact on a lesson. And then of course, Google Classroom would allow her to assign the assignments, select the assignments, you know, and continue to teach. It's not perfect. There'll be plenty of issues that happen. Good news is Google's upgrading Google Meets in the next few weeks and so teachers are going to have more control over the classrooms. So we're going to balance, you know, head off some of the concerns we might have with student behaviors that can happen. Again, my nine-year-old got pretty silly at times when he was on his Chromebook for school, like kids do stuff. So there are going to be some enhancements. They're adding a whiteboard, digital whiteboard feature. But I think this will only get better as we go on. But the idea is by sharing instructional time, keeping kids on the same plane of, you know, equity, right? The opportunity to do that lesson. If we completely did it separate and just had remote classrooms and in-person classrooms, I think we would lose community. Kids wouldn't be part of school in the way that I think is really important. I think kids miss that the most, just talking to friends, just being part of a class. And then you also create the opportunity for kids to fall very far behind. And so that's why we're going to try this experiment.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee?
One more quick question. According to your charts, like we're in the green. What I didn't realize was we have teachers from 53 different communities. What if a teacher tests town tests in the red? Are we still going to allow them to come in to teach? And what if not, what happens to that classroom?
Yeah, thank you. You are asking the best questions tonight. Because this is an important one. I really think it's a super important that I can share how I think about this. Our safety measures are a collective approach. So the mask wearing, the social distancing, the safety, sanitization, the cohorting of kids, the town community prevalence rates of COVID, those are all designed to work together to try to increase our safety. What we have to keep in mind is all those are in place because we assume that everyone is potentially carrying COVID. I mean, that's the whole point of all those safety procedures is to assume that kids and teachers could be asymptomatic carriers of COVID. If we could be sure that people weren't carriers, then we wouldn't need masks, we wouldn't need all the hand sanitizer and such, but we can never be sure. Unfortunately, even testing isn't 100% accurate. So we have to make assumptions that everybody is a carrier. And so that's why the concern about, I live in Connecticut. Connecticut's rates are better than Massachusetts. I'm not any safer than anyone in Massachusetts. We're all potentially exposed at one time or another. So that's why it's part of a system. It's not an individual failsafe. No one part of this system works, you know, I should take that back. I think the mask works the best if you talk to experts, but they're all critical components of trying to increase safety. And you'll hear I'm pretty purposeful about saying increase safety because unfortunately 100% safety is never attainable ever. So our system is based on the assumption that anyone at any time could be a carrier. So that's why it almost doesn't matter where people come from, but if our community goes into red, that means there's a lot of COVID around. So the risk just went way up. And so that's just a whole nother layer of risk that then I think we all would agree would be just not acceptable.
I actually, if I may, I do have another question. We have students that are going to be choicing into the district from, last year, that was a discussion. Working with other districts, are we working with those districts as far as transportation goes? Because I do understand that they have to provide for transportation, but if that district is going remote, you know, how does that fall back on this district as far as being able to work with that one?
Yeah, the transportation for students with special needs is always very complex and there's multiple vendors that are involved in that work. Now it's increasingly difficult because some of the vans that folks used to use are no longer really appropriate anymore because you can't do the social distancing on them. They're just too small. So all that has to be, we worked out. So our special ed director, all special ed directors are working on, you know, it all depends on which kid you have in which facility and how you're going to transport them. It just shuffles the deck on what will work. There could be a lot more, you know, individual services with different costs. It's always is better to try to get multiple kids on a run on a bus to one of those different schools, but now it's all up in the air. There will be some safety, some facilities are remote. It's just, it's something that unfolds kid by kid, case by case. But what doesn't change are the safety guidelines.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have a question? Guess not. Chiro? Is he still here? Anybody else on the school committee? If not, it's... Oh, Bill, okay.
Yeah. Took me a little while to figure out how to get onto this. I want to thank Dr. Valar for his presentation. I know it's a lot of work and it's a, it's a really crazy time. I don't envy his position at all. I think he's laid out a reasonable plan and like he says, I mean, we just don't know where this is going. I, and I'm confident that he'll make the right decisions if we get an uptick that the remediations that we put in place as quickly as possible. I think his concern is, is concern of all of us is that students and staff, safety is first. And I think there's just so many unknowns that I wish him the best. I wish all of students and staff the best. I think this is the best possible plan we could go with at this time. Thank you, Dr. Valar.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Because I was, I was hearing in two different ways. Okay, sorry. So going back to testing, I mean, I know, you know, it's not 100% accurate, but if everybody was tested and we were able to weed out those that are non-symptomatic years, that would make your life a lot easier, even if you, you know, follow through with the guidelines on top of it and, and really prevent this from, from taking hold and weeding out the problem before it really becomes, becomes one. I mean, this, you know, a non-symptomatic student passing it on to another student who's non-symptomatic, you'll never know until when their grandparents winds up in the hospital that there's, there's a link there. And so I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, the suggestion of the community that, that has to become something that everybody, you know, either voluntarily or is required to submit to in order to truly weed out this problem. So I guess what I'm suggesting is that, that testing be made more of an issue to parents, whether voluntarily or mandatory. I'm sure cost is an issue, but the cost of someone becoming ill is going to be a much greater issue. And I guess that's really why it's more of a comment. Otherwise, I agree, you've done a great job. I just want to point criticism is, you know, it'd be nice if you can use us to help you in the future because a lot of the things that you have come up with are ideas that I had myself. And so I could have definitely taken some of the burden off of your staff to, to contribute. Basically the same words that you've used in the future and so I can offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sparrow? No. This is Gullickson? This is Gullickson? No, not there either. Since, given the school committee a chance to talk, I think it's time we move to public input. I know Jocelyn Rodriguez has asked to be heard. Jocelyn?
Hi, Martina. It's actually Talis. I don't know why it showed up that way. That was my former last name. Hi, Dr. Valar.
I know, but then I read it right off the screen.
I know, it was because I signed in in my old Google account. So sorry for the confusion. Thank you for the presentation. It was lovely. We still have a ton of questions and we're wondering, you know, there's, there's definitely two separate groups. We have the educator questions and then we have the family questions. But one, one of them that came up is kind of news to us that we're going to be recorded while we're teaching, live streaming basically. And, you know, that is very concerning for a whole bunch of reasons, namely privacy of certain students. So what are we going to do about that? Like what are the protocols for, for instance, someone who doesn't want to be photographed or live streams? And then also if there's something embarrassing that happens and then it gets posted?
Thank you. So as Jocelyn, as you know, we are engaged in official conversations with the SEA and district administration. We had our first meeting last Friday to talk about specific employee concerns and this one kind of rides both fences a little bit, I'd say. But last spring, the directive was, and teachers actually requested to record classrooms as a means of protecting themselves from any accusation of anything that they said. And Google will record the meeting and then email it back to the teacher later that day and they can have record of that. You know, as far as capturing that video, I suppose it's possible. Again, this is the best means that we have to educate children remotely. I think what goes on in a classroom around Macbeth shouldn't be a great concern to anyone. There are going to be controls in Google, I think that will help teachers if a student becomes a problem. The district will also enforce its disciplinary codes. If a student is disruptive and there's a problem in class because of their conduct, certainly, school administration is going to work to support that classroom so they can continue to move forward. We're also going to spend a lot of time teaching children our expectations so that they can know how to best access learning remotely. But I don't see any way that we can take away this tool and be remotely successful in teaching kids in these circumstances. It's the best tool that we currently have.
Thank you. Has any questions? I don't even know how to get to you. I guess the best thing to do is to say that, you know, do call the help line, text the number. Also, they're going to have family meetings. I had it down someplace. Look online. Each school is going to have a parent meeting so that you can ask the questions that are specific to your school. And that's going to be very different questions, I am sure, for kindergarten children than for seniors in high school. So check those dates out, get to those meetings, and if you have any questions, contact the help line.
One footnote, there's a question in chat. If dual language is still an option for children in kindergarten who are doing remote?
Yes. We absolutely remain committed to our dual language program. And again, that's another strength of the model we're trying is to have those kids still be available. I know that the dual language teachers took it upon themselves over the summer to actually meet and they sent a proposal to their building principals about how they thought about this and it's a super motivated bunch. They are super committed to their program and we want to keep kids enrolled and keep them learning, you know, their Spanish and their English. So yeah, we're going to support that program. And I would just echo, if you have questions, please reach out, attend the building meetings, email the principal, the help desk. Folks definitely want to hear your questions.
Another question in chat about being sick. If a child leaves school sick or is staying home for being sick, that may be a symptom of COVID, will they be required a doctor's note for clearance before returning to school? I know kids' symptoms can be different as in GI issues.
Yeah, so this is very, a very serious situation, obviously, and this is one of the reasons why we've had Karen Cheka become our medical lead on this so she can help provide guidance to the schools and help answer those questions around illness. You know, it can be a case by case situation. Essentially what they're telling us in the guidance is a student should stay home if they have any one of these symptoms. A fever of 100 degrees Fahrenheit or higher, chills, shaking. That temperature was adjusted recently. It actually was a little higher in the past. It's now 100 degrees. A cough, not due to any known cause. So if you have a chronic cough, that's different, but if it's a new cough. Difficulty breathing, shortness of breath, loss of taste or smell, a sore throat, a headache, but the headache needs to be in combination with other symptoms. So a headache and a cough would be alarm and you should stay home. Muscle aches, body aches, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, fatigue when combined with other symptoms, nasal congestion or runny nose, not due to a known situation. So if you have seasonal allergies and your nose is runny, that's not necessarily cause for alarm. But if you have a runny nose and a headache that you don't normally have, that could be cause for alarm. So what I'm going to suggest is that's a lot of stuff. That's one of the reasons why we have nurses at every school now. We're going to have... We're going to have Karen Cheka available to support those nurses and we're hiring nurses aides because we could also keep them home and make a call and get some medical advice. I'm not a medical doctor. But our nursing staff can at least point you in the right direction and you can talk to your doctor. Now, the guidance is if you have COVID-19 symptoms, then it's 14 days of self-quarantine before you can return, unless you go to a doctor and the doctor diagnoses you sick with something else. So if the doctor rules out COVID, then that student can return to school. But as you can see, I anticipate our nurses are going to be super busy. And there's going to be a lot of concern for that first runny nose, that first time a kid coughs. I see it in stores when I walk around. Someone coughs, everyone's looking. We're all hypervigilant. I get it, I know why, we're all scared and we have a reason to be. But we'll work with the public health officials, we'll work with our nurses, and we'll help families connect with their doctors best we can so they can get answers. I ask people to be patient because, and that's a great, I just saw a question about nurses' emails and such. I will talk with our communications people and see if there's a way we can create like a hotline for that, to provide people with help. I think it's a super good idea. But just have patience. I'm sorry, I know keeping your kid home is a real problem. You got to work. A lot of folks, when they don't work, they don't get paid. It's a big deal. So I totally understand it. That was my whole life growing up. We didn't have insurance, my father had to work, that was the end of it. So I get it. And if there's a way to figure it out, we'll partner with you. But we do need to collectively be safe. And so if kids are sick, and we'll send more information about this to families to help them make these decisions. But definitely want to keep kids home and hopefully they're not COVID sick.
Jess Sweet had a question. She should unmute herself.
Hi, thanks. So my older children haven't been near district since the state took over. But I'm concerned about my younger one who's supposed to be starting pre-K this year. I'm being told that they are mandated to wear masks. I'm being told by Eastford Road School, no masks, they're not allowed in. I think it's a little ridiculous as most three and four-year-olds cannot keep a mask on properly. I know for a fact my four-year-old won't wear one at all. And I, as a parent, I can't wear a mask because I have a medical condition. Am I going to be refused to allow to go to the school if my child's in there?
Well, to go to the school, unfortunately, yes. It's not going to be a popular conversation, I'm sure. And maybe there are things that we can talk with you in Eastford Road and figure out something to help in your circumstance. But, yeah, we have to follow these protocols for the well-being and safety of everybody. And, you know, I'm open to conversations and see if there's something we can do. Yes, face masks are available, but they're not the same as a mask. So the glass face shield does not protect in the same way that a mask does. And so, not to say we're not trying to explore alternatives for kids in those circumstances because there may be. But our general rule of thumb is we need to have masks in the building.
But how do you expect three and four-year-olds in pre-K or even children in kindergarten who don't necessarily understand everything that's going on in our world to keep masks on and social distance? It's almost impossible for that age.
We're going to have to teach them and work with them.
Okay, and what happens with the students that don't do it because they are scared or they're uncomfortable? For example, my son is uncomfortable. I cannot get that boy to wear a mask to save my life. So what about the children, what about them?
Well, my experience has been if you, if we can work with them and create a system of reward and support for them that they will be able to toe the line and do it. But I'm not saying it'll be easy, but it's really important. Again, I have to look at the safety of, you know, the 400 or 500 people in any given school building. So I'm trying to balance needs of individuals against the needs of all and that's always an impossible scenario. But we're going to do the best we can. And again, I think that I'd be happy to have folks sit down with you and try to figure out some alternatives that work. But, you know, it's super important that kids wear masks. And I know that we followed Head Start over the summer. They ran a program and they were very successful with kids in masks. And that's a preschool program. So I think we can do it. But I do appreciate that, you know, not every kid is going to take to it first out of the gate. That's for sure.
So just to be clear, you guys are not following the CDC guidelines for children under the age of five? It's up to the discretion of the parent? And you guys are making it mandatory from pre-K to what, first grade, I was told?
Yeah, I'm saying if a child wants to go to Eastford Road School at this time, we're asking that they wear a mask. Because collectively, it's in the well-being of everybody. And we're willing to work with that child and work with the family to help them learn to be comfortable. We'll supply the mask if necessary. But the health and well-being of everyone is super important. Yes, the CDC has guidelines. These are all guidelines. But I have to be responsible to do everything I can to protect everyone in that school. So I'm sorry if that makes you uncomfortable. But, you know, I have to try to go to sleep at night, too.
It doesn't make me anxious, it makes me worried that my four-year-old is going to be traumatized because he's going to be forced to have something on his face even when he doesn't want to, regardless of the reward system, regardless of what we promise him. And he's not going to have a positive, good school experience before he's mandated by the state to go to kindergarten. So that was my problem with it. And, you know, the second thing is, what about post-contact for children in pre-K that still need help and assistance in the bathroom with, you know, going to the bathroom and washing their hands?
Yeah, so again, I'm happy to have a conversation offline and not have a public debate with you. But we do have the PPE that's necessary to protect our preschool teachers. They need a higher level of PPE due to the fact they're working with younger children and they do need a health with toiletry and et cetera. And that's why we purchased N95 masks, we have face shields, we have gowns and we have gloves. Because we foresee that there are going to be circumstances where they're necessary. And I do believe that even a three-year-old and a four-year-old with positive education, teaching and positive reinforcement will not be traumatized by the experience. If we make it a negative experience, absolutely that is not a good way to go. And so that's why, as a district, we have worked hard to create positive behaviors intervention frameworks and try to approach these issues from a reinforcement scenario, not a disciplinary approach. But again, this is a, you know, completely unprecedented circumstance. We have the well-being and health of so many people online, people who I've never even met, people whose families I haven't met. And so, yeah, I got to make some tough decisions. And this is one I'm willing to take a little heat for at the moment because it's probably the only way I'm going to get hundreds or if not a thousand kids back to school sometime soon where they desperately need to be.
I'm glad you were able to answer my question. I'm sorry you felt it was a debate. I'm just very worried about traumatizing my child, of him seeing people in gloves and gowns and face masks and all the protective gear we do need. I agree with that. I'm just worried about him emotionally and other children like that. I mean, I get why you guys are doing it, I understand why you're doing it. I'm just worried about the psychological aspect of it because he's so new to school and being away from, you know, mommy, for example, et cetera. So thank you for answering my question.
Yeah, and thank you for loving your kid. It's obvious that you very much do so. We will do our best to support him. I think, you know, honestly, it's our preschool teachers who have a heavy lift there. But they can create that environment that will make your child feel much safer and much happier. And I hope that I can support them to do that. But I do appreciate the candor in your question and I appreciate how much you love your child. I think, you know, we all love our children. But I certainly can feel that in your question, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Members forum? Mr. Bishop, do you have anything to add to this conversation? Mr. Bishop? Okay.
I don't know. I'm trying, Martina, they'll get through to you. Am I there, Martina? You know? This computer is about a second away from going to the switch. As I said earlier, this is a crazy time. I understand the parents of the four-year-olds have major concerns with kids. And, you know, our hands are really tied. I mean, I think Dr. Valar is doing everything he possibly can to meet the needs of everybody, from the four-year-old up to the 63-year-old, 65-year-old sitting here talking to him. I mean, it's just a lot of new things that we just are going to experience. And, you know, Dr. Valar has enough ability doing something because the train is going to go off the rails at some point. Something's going to happen and you got to pull it back on the track and keep it moving. I'm happy to see the kids are back in school. It's where they belong. And I wasn't so optimistic a month ago, but as I see the numbers come down in Massachusetts and our local community has done a good job with masks, and I firmly believe that's what's really brought this to number now, but I'm not a doctor. I wish him the best of luck. And if there's anything I can do, I'm only a phone call away from anybody, well, teachers, parents and my fellow committee members. Thank you and enjoy the rest of the summer.
Lori? Lori, do you have any questions? Anything to comment?
I have one question. So will also...
Ma'am, unfortunately, it is, the public input agenda item has passed.
Oh, okay.
I do apologize. I do appreciate you coming in. But we do have to stick to our agenda and I greatly apologize.
Just feel free to log on to the helpline. You'll get the better answers there. Andrew?
I want to thank all of the members of the community that tuned in tonight. But with the remote meeting we had, I saw up to 84 people we had in this. I may have, it's really tiny, so I might be, my numbers might be off. But there were plenty of people that tuned in tonight. So I appreciate those that tuned in. Dr. Valar, again, thank you and your staff and teachers for all the hard work that they put into this plan. It is pretty detailed. I know that there's only so far you can go, pretty much right up until the last second. So I know that there are still things that are, you're going to be releasing out to the public. I encourage anybody that's still tuning in and anybody that watches this after, please log on to the school district's website for any and all updates. Also, you can follow Southbridge Public Schools on Facebook. Whatever's posted to the district website is also posted to their Facebook page as well. They continuously update it and release updates to keep us informed. So if you want to get the most up-to-date information, I'll refer you there. I'm going to be a little bit straightforward as a parent. I have a lot of trust in what Dr. Valar has put together as a plan. But I will just put it out in the public that, you know, we will be remotely learning our son this year. It's the learning aspect, we talked to him about it, me and my wife talked about it. We all, three of us, felt comfortable with him kind of staying home and starting the year off remotely. I would encourage parents to talk to their kids and see how they feel too about it, especially your middle and high school kids. I am a firm believer that we need to have the elementary kids in school because the social learning and the social dynamic is very important to their future learning down the road. I was supportive of a elementary in-school, secondary out-of-school hybrid that I had seen in some of the districts from where I grew up down in Georgia. But this is definitely, I believe, the best course of action that we need to take. But we've decided, but through talking with my son, that kind of helped us lean towards that decision. So I do encourage parents that talk to your kids and get their input before you come to a final decision. Because if your child doesn't feel comfortable going to school and you send them to school, that's going to have a psychological effect on their learning and vice versa as well. So I do encourage parents to talk to their kids. Stay up to date at the district's website. Everybody stay safe and enjoy the rest of the year's summer.
Chiro? Chiro? Anything that you'd like to comment on? Lori?
I am good. I thank you, Dr. Valar. I agree with Andrew. I second that you've done a fabulous job outlining this. And I'll reiterate with Bill, please, use us, utilize us. We want to work. We ran and elected for a reason. You know, me, I'll dig deep, call me, I'm here.
I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank the citizens who stayed with us for such a long meeting. I want to thank Dr. Valar for giving us some good concrete information on the how, where and why this is happening. We'll do everything in our power to keep you informed. Looking forward to our next meeting. I would suggest to Dr. Valar that he schedule a meeting with us once school gets going and he can tell us, you know, the good things that have happened. We're looking to hear good things.
I hope you're right.
There will be good things. As long as teachers and kids are in the same spot, there will be good things.
I don't know if you can hear me now?
Oh, yes, okay.
Sorry, I messed up the commute again. I agree that everyone, Dr. Lori, you've done a great job and I commend you all on that. And, you know, I think we extend my offer to help in any way we can. Yes, we want good things, but when crises arise and we need some brainstorming, use us as a team, we're here to help you. Thank you, thank you.
Adjournment at, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you can.
Some moved?
Second?
Second.
Third?
Adjournment at 8:48. Thank you, folks. Have a nice rest of your summer.